All the October the 10th meeting to order, those of you in the audience having centennial moments and celebrations, please come on in. City Clerk, can you have the roll call, please?
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Is there a closed session report, City Attorney?
Yes.
City Attorney has a closed session report.
The council tonight agreed to and approved the city to move forward with the city of Tustin to file a legal challenge to the environmental impact reports for two projects in the city of Irvine, so 2323 Main Street and Avalon Bay Projects.
Thank you. We'll next stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation will be led by Reverend Dr. Deborah Barrett, the Zen Center of Orange County in Costa Mesa, and Councilmember Rosansky, would you lead us with the pledge?
I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us join together now to reflect upon the bonds which unite us rather than the issues which may sometimes seem to divide us. We give thanks simply for another day. We call to mind all those who have encouraged us, who have given us love and friendship. We reflect upon those sources, both great and humble, which inspire, support, and guide our lives. Above all, we give thanks for the gift of our lives. We know we are here for only a brief moment in time. Let us this evening recommit ourselves to the common good. Let us rededicate ourselves to the highest ideals of public service. Let us renew our common purpose of justice, hope, and fulfillment for all people. May our voices and actions this evening truly express and manifest these most worthy ideals.
Thank you. Okay, we now move into our presentations. Do we have representatives of the Junior League present? I think I saw one of them last night somewhere, at least one. Would you please introduce yourselves at the...
Angie Rowe.
I'm truly boring.
Annalisa Byson.
And I'm Sandra G.
Thank you very much for coming, and I have a proclamation that the Junior League has informed us about their Christmas Company program, and so that we have annually supported that program. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Junior League through this proclamation and the Christmas Company. For more than 50 years, the Junior League of Orange County California Incorporated has been known as one of the premier charitable organizations in our community and since its inception has raised approximately $6.5 million. The Junior League is a member of the Association of Junior Leagues International and International Organization of Women Building Better Communities and whose membership consists of more than 700 committed volunteers who serve underrepresented and less fortunate individuals by supporting various community impact projects, either financially or through Women Power. Current projects of the Junior League are the Orange County Bar, a foundation, higher education mentoring program, Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts Center, Girls Incorporated Actions for Safety, YMCA, I'm sure that's not YWCA, YMCA, Youth Service Corp., Casa Teresa minoring program, and Bear Hugs. The signature fundraiser of the Junior League of Orange County is the Christmas Company, which celebrates its 31st year in October of 2006 with a return to the Newport Dunes Waterfront Resort location. The Christmas Company will feature special events such as an evening of food and wine hosted by the legendary winemaker Gina Gallo and the Gallo Family Vineyards, a Hawaiian-themed opening gala, and various fashion shows. Now therefore, I, Don Webb, Mayor of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of October 14th to the 18th, 2006, as Junior League of Orange County California Week in the city of Newport Beach and urge all citizens to participate in the Christmas Company. (APPLAUSE). Don't you let me shake your hand and spread out, make sure that everybody gets the camera. All right, now would one of you like to, one or two of you like to say something about the Junior League and the Christmas Company?
Members of the City Council and Mayor Webb, thank you very much for this proclamation. On behalf of the members of the Junior League of Orange County, we appreciate you giving this to us, and we look forward to our event this week, and we'd like to invite you all to ten. The tents are up over at the Newport Dunes, and you can see the little spires, and our tickets are for sale, and we'd love to see you all there and to benefit all the at-risk children and women in the Orange County community that our programs benefit. So, thank you very much.
Now, do people have to buy tickets?
They do.
Where do you get them?
You may purchase them on the website at www.jlocc.org, or also you can call our headquarters in Newport Beach.
Okay, and what are the hours of the Christmas Company?
I don't know. I'm going to defer to our chair with the details.
But I'd like to suggest you give the email address again and do it slowly.
The email address is www.jlocc.org, and the show runs Sunday from 10:00 to 6:00, Monday from 9:00 to 6:00, and Tuesday, 9:00 to 6:00, and Wednesday, 9:00 to 3:00. And the opening night gala is Saturday night, there are still tickets available, and it will be from 7:00 to 11:00 at the Dunes. And we're just looking forward to everyone being there. It is $10 admission, and you can buy those tickets at the door. It's just a special events ticket that you want to buy online.
Everybody needs to enjoy a Hawaiian night out.
That's right.
At the Christmas Company.
Free food, free beer and wine, so it's a good fun time, so thanks so much.
Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We next have a centennial book presentation by, or has that been changed? All right, my notes here have been corrected. By the way, the centennial book has been published, it was on sale at the centennial event that we had on Sunday. It's an absolutely wonderful history, pictorial history of the city of Newport Beach, and everybody should have one. They cost $25, and they can be picked up at a number of places around town, including our recreation department here, a bookstore on Balboa Island, and where else?
The library.
The library.
And online.
The Centennial Committee Recognition, that's our...Marie Knight is going to start that one off.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Throughout the last, I'd say, 16 to 18 months, I've been here on several occasions to have you help us thank many of the community volunteers that have helped with the centennial. And tonight, I don't want to say we've saved the best for last, because they have all been wonderful and all been very important, but we thought it was very fitting that our final recognition go to the group, the committees, that launched our centennial year of celebration and brought it to a wonderful finale on Sunday night. And so, the persons we're recognizing this evening from those two committees are the committee chairs, the individual folks who stepped up within this large committee to chair some of the different events and activities. So, the first group we want to start with is our Let's Do Launch Committee, and I will start with bringing up first the chair of that committee, he did an absolutely fabulous job, Sharon Esterly. And if the mayor would like to join me...[625.04][625.04](APPLAUSE). And as I've said before, Sharon gave numerous, numerous hundreds of hours with this event, and we all remember dancing to the Beach Boys and how much fun it was, so we really appreciate her time. On Sharon's committee, we want to recognize Jill Adams. Jill is here. Tim Brown.
Debbie Fass.
Mike Eubanks. And Gerald Ishibashi, and you'll see us recognize Gerald twice. Gerald was so extremely instrumental in both events. He helped us coordinate all of the entertainment that we had at both the launch and the closing event, and did a fabulous job and was such a huge help to the staff. We really appreciate him.
You even let me help introduce Bill Medley at the...
Yes, he did. Dale Skiles, is Dale here? Oh, there she is. The Honorable Harriet Weider, you know Harriet's here. Nancy Irvine. And I'm hoping, did I miss any of the committee chairs? Please join me again in thanking the group that helped launch our centennial year.[761.13][761.13](APPLAUSE). And the second group is the committee chairs for the 100 Years Between the Peers Committee that gave us an absolute fabulous finale on Sunday, and it starts with, of course, our wonderful committee chair Dana Pettit.[800.01][800.01](APPLAUSE). Before I call anybody else up, you do that. And joining Dana on her committee, Tim Brown.[828.82][828.82](APPLAUSE). Yes. Gerald Ishibashi.[836.63][836.63](APPLAUSE). Mike Drury.[846.82][846.82](APPLAUSE). Grace Dove.[850.82][850.82](APPLAUSE). C. Tobin, is C. here? Did I miss C.? She did a great job.[858.82][858.82](APPLAUSE). Kathy Harrison.[861.82][861.82](APPLAUSE). Is Mary Lonich here, Mary Makeit? Mary coordinated our VIP activities. And Ralph and Penny Rodheim, did they... Yes.[878.82][878.82](APPLAUSE). Notice they gave that to me. Didn't give it to a city official or anything.
You have to declare it.
Yeah, I got to declare it. So, I hope we didn't miss anyone from the closing committee?
Squeeze, squeeze together a little bit. You don't have to.[898.82][898.82](LAUGHTER).
community volunteers. We looked at it the other day, and for the past two years, we've had close to 1,500 volunteers from the community helping with the various centennial events, and it really speaks volumes to the way that the community came forward, they embraced the centennial, they loved this city, many of them, as you saw, volunteered over and over again. Your Centennial Steering Committee put in two years working on this event with multiple meetings, and so they did a wonderful job. I also want to thank one final time the city team for all of the work that they did. Sunday's event was definitely, truly, a team effort. General Services, Tommy Anderson and the guys down there, everything they did on that beach to get us ready for both stages, they were phenomenal. Public Works, our traffic folks that made it so easy for the shuttles to get around town. Our guys in GIS who probably redid the site maps 100 times because of every change, and they did so with a smile on their face. Robin and her team who were approving entertainment contracts that just looked a little different than our normal contracts, and worked with us to make it all happen. I know if I start naming people, I will forget them, and I truly apologize to anybody I've forgotten, but you have a fabulous, fabulous team. And I would be extremely remiss if I didn't thank the Recreation Senior Services Team, who for two years took on a second job. And they did so, they were fabulous. They never said no, they said whatever needs to be done, we'll do it. Three night meetings a week for some of them for the last year and a half, multiple weekends, hundreds of hours, and I was extremely proud of them on Sunday, because as I told Homer, I wore the headset and was amazed the entire day, no matter what problem or issue surfaced, they handled it, they dealt with it, and they did it like they've been dealing with it 1,000 times before. And at the end of the night, many of that team were our part-time rec leaders, our part-time swim folks. They were there at 5:30 in the morning, and they didn't leave till 11:30 at night, and they had smiles on their faces at 11:30 at night, and just did a fabulous job. So, from the bottom of my heart, I thank them. They are the best team I have ever had the pleasure of working with, so thank you very much.[1110.61][1110.61](APPLAUSE).
As you can tell from that last description, the Commander in Chief, General, Admiral, whatever you want to call her, was just speaking, and Marie, we will have a night for you too. And she did such an incredible job for the full two-year period of thinking of things that nobody else could think of, but things that made it work. And I know that when I attended the event, and I went from the Balboa Pier to 15th Street to Newport and back again, and saw the literally thousands of people with smiles on their faces, it was just, it was one of the most incredible events I've ever seen. And the same thing happened at the Let's Do Launch at the very beginning. The families came together, we had two great family events, and we had Sharon Esterly and Dana Pettit did incredible jobs of pulling together the, putting the ideas together, putting the bands, putting the entertainment, and all of the various different booths and volunteers. I attended a couple of the committee meetings, and you should have seen Dana just almost standing people up in the wall saying, "You, you, 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 do this, do that," and it all got done, it was just really great. So, I would like to really thank everybody, all of the senior employees, the thousands of volunteers that we had, because it's one of the things that makes our city really great, is both our city staff as well as our volunteers are so incredibly generous, and our citizens, I think, really appreciate it, and I hope that our citizens out there, if you see volunteers that you recognize, please say thank you, as well as the city staff members. Anybody else in the council wish to say something?
I just would echo Don's comments. Marie, you're the unsung hero here, heroine, quite candidly, and Don says there's going to be another night for you. I just, I had so much joy watching you ride your Segway around.[1246.83][1246.83](LAUGHTER). I just want to let everybody know, I'm not sure which was bigger, you know?
Careful.
She was really good at it. Anyhow, she had her headsets and her Segway, and it was awesome.
It was a wonderful event. Thank you very much, all of you. The next item of presentation is the National Community Planning Month proclamation, and this goes, Sharon, to our planning department. The quality of life in Newport Beach residents faces challenges, many of which can be addressed through community planning. Community planning can provide better choices of how people live, work, and travel. The full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand and support that excellence. The month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States. We recognize the valuable contributions made by the professional community planners in the city of Newport Beach and appreciate their continued commitment. Now therefore, be it resolved that Don Webb, Mayor of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim October as the National Community Planning Month. It's my pleasure to give this to our planning director, Patty Temple.[1333.33][1333.33](APPLAUSE). Would you like to say one or two words?
Just a couple. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been an amazing year for our planning function, our department, and all of the members of our community who have participated in planning. We've been honored by two award-winning planning efforts, including our coastal land use plan as well as our new sign regulations, and as you all know, we have spent a great deal of time and with much community involvement on our general plan update, and that has been a major milestone for us as well. When thinking about those things, it's easy to think about the planners, but you know, there's still all the day-to-day business that goes on and all of the projects that go through the planning department, both that go to the planning commission, and that just need a building permit. And as you all know, the staff has been very, very busy, and we try to do a high-quality job that our community appreciates while addressing the needs of the community for, that the development that gets approved is equal to the status of this community. So, it's our pleasure to do that, and we do thank you for this honor in calling this month National Community Planning Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty.[1436.33][1436.33](APPLAUSE). City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On September the 20th, I attended the workshop with residents of the Newport Coast regarding the continued closure of Pelican Hills Road. The Irvine Company has requested that this road be closed for an additional two years. It was clear to me in attending the hearing that the two-year closure of this road is simply unacceptable. And while it should be noted that there are residents on both sides of this issue, I believe it is prudent for us to do an independent evaluation of the remaining construction activity with a goal of reopening the road as soon as is safe and practical. Residents are very concerned about limited access to this neighborhood in the event of fire or natural disaster, and other residents are concerned about the impact of construction traffic and night lighting at the site. Accordingly, I'm requesting the city manager and public works to undertake an evaluation of the existing road condition, any remaining construction activities such as the entryway bridge that would require the road to be closed, the status of the utility undergrounding, requirements for nighttime lighting and signage, emergency evacuation requirements, and other issues that may impact on the opening of the road. Our goal should be to reopen the road as soon as it is safe. I'm asking that this report be concluded in time to be discussed at our November 14th meeting, and I understand this course of action is agreeable to both the residents and the Irvine Company.
Thank you. Councilmember Selig?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Nichols? Announcements?
Yes. An announcement. I would like to have a discussion, if we could, on the parking down at the beach. I think we've reached a point where I'm suggesting that it be like from 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. or something like that, that maybe we get some kind of sticker system. But I believe we have to address some of the problems we've had in this area, and I'll leave it up to you as to whether you want to handle more than one location or just one location, or...thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I know that some of our Corona Del Mar residents have been expressing concerns about the activities at the beach affecting their property, and to kind of dovetail with what Councilmember Nichols just said, that our city manager is working with our police chief on these issues, and I would appreciate that the manager brings back to council a report, maybe in the next six weeks, on how we're addressing that. And then, second announcement is some cities are passing resolutions in support of Proposition 83, Jessica's Law, and I would ask that the city manager bring a similar resolution to city council for our consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Well, since I have about four miles of beach in my district, and the parking issue continues to get exacerbated, especially in Corona Del Mar last week, I will just third the motion. Let's go ahead and do a study session or whatever we need to do, and let those citizens all come in and see if we need some restrictions at nighttime parking. I think it's appropriate. In terms of announcements, I don't know if this is the appropriate time just to make the comments, nobody said anything about our great party on Sunday, and I know you intend to, but for all...
You're going to steal Don's thunder now.
I'm not going to steal it, but I was on the boardwalk pretty much all day, and that happens to be my district, and I have spent eight years, actually more than that, 14 years, going up and down the boardwalk, and I just want to say, first, I'll stop it at just my citizens on the boardwalk. They were totally involved and enjoying the entire day, which was very well organized and was a family event, and every family and every house had people in front of it, and at least to all those citizens on the peninsula, I want to say thank you guys for being very involved. I think it's the first time I've seen everybody come together for one event, an event that I'll let Don talk about, that was so well organized and so well-attended, and the grand finale, hopefully everybody saw it. I was at the Newport Pier, it was just fabulous, but I'll let you go ahead and take it.
You haven't left me a whole lot left to talk about, but that's all right.
No, 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 I wanted to talk about my citizens, but go ahead.
Steve Rosansky, did you have something you wanted to talk about, mention?
Well, since you're going to take the centennial, I'll just mention that we broke ground the other day on the, what do they call it, the secret discovery garden?
Yes.
At the library, it was a fun event, and it's an area outside the library that's going to be redeveloped for kids, little kids, and I understand the only way an adult can get in there to see it is to bring a kid, so parents and grandparents better make sure you're on the good side of your kids and grandkids. In any event, it should be done by the end of the year, and it'll be a great New Year's present for all the kids in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have three things I was going to mention. One is that all of us, not all of us, most of us up here, attended the Irvine Ranch National Natural Landmark Dedication Ceremony today at Reef Point, in which the representatives from the Department of Interior, I believe, the governor, Donald Brenn, and Ray Watson, and one other gentleman, discussed and talked about the 37,000 acres that have been landmarked as a national landmark. And these landmarks are ones that are created within the private sector, more or less than, and, but allowing full public use. And, and the Irvine Company has put together a, a fund that will allow for the maintenance of these facilities. It's a $50 million fund that goes, will cause this 37,000 acres to be taken care of forever. And so that's something that is a real resource. It starts at the ocean, and it goes all the way to the mountains, and there's a connectivity all through there. Secondly, at our study session, and also, you citizens will be receiving an envelope like this. If you haven't already received one, I've got mine today. It says official disaster preparedness information. We have two people that are working full-time with the fire department, Matt Brisboise and Katie Freeman, who will be able to answer your questions. Give them a call. Their phone numbers are in here. It talks about the various different elements that you can get involved with, as far as assert training, as far as neighborhood training, and as far as individual training, and some of the things that you need to do to keep prepared for disaster, for a disaster of any type. It discusses, in addition to earthquakes, tsunamis, and we would hope that everybody will take advantage of the programs that are offered by the city. And we do have an emergency preparedness program in which the fire department is responsible for managing, and our staff is well-trained in how to carry, how to take care of you in a disaster. And lastly, we had a wonderful party. It's been just a great year. I'd like to really compliment the council for the support that they have given the staff, as well as the volunteers in carrying out this. I've been exceptionally lucky to be mayor during the centennial year, and I, true, I did bore Todd a lot with centennial moments. But when you have a party like we had Sunday, and the smiles on people's faces, and, and that I mentioned before, I've, I've just received huge number of compliments. And the staff that we had and the volunteers that we had were just absolutely incredible. You could not ask for anything better in the city of Newport Beach. It was truly a celebration befitting of a Newport Beach community. So thank you, community, for participating, and thank you, council, and staffers, and volunteers for all that you did. We're finished with announcements. The consent calendar. Those are items one through 12. City Clerk?
All matters listed under consent calendar items one through 12 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any items you'd like to remove from the agenda? Councilmember Curry?
None.
Selig?
None.
Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
I'll forgo.
I have none. Do we have a motion?
Oh, excuse me?
Staff, do you have any items that you'd like to have removed?
Mr. Mayor, I have subtraction, actually, to number five. Number five is entitled Citywide Cost Allegation Plan and Cost of Service Study, and your action should be to delete the second recommendation that says that we would need a budget amendment. That is not the case. That is a budgeted item for that amendment.
I'm sorry. I, thank you. We will remove that. And now, does the public have any item that they would like to have removed?
Number three, please.
Number three. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt consent calendar items one through 12, except for item number three, and deleting recommendation number two under consent calendar item number five.
Second. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is the Continued Employment Waiver from Pers for Police Chief.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dolores Auding. I live in Newport Beach. I pulled this item the last time also, because I just, at that, when, when I pulled this before, how long ago was that, anyway? How long has he had this, his extension of contract with the city?
City manager, can you answer?
Yes, it was an 18-month contract.
Okay.
So he's had it for, going on a year.
Okay, so now it's going to be over in January in 2007. And I just think that the public should understand what happened, what has happened, and why this has to happen. And, and I understand that he does a great job, and he's chairperson of the airborne law enforcement ABEL, which is the helicopter program. How many heli, can I ask how many helicopters we have in that helicopter program currently? Because that kind of, it's okay, I'll ask later on. Anyway, the bottom line here is that he's a great guy, and he's doing a great job, and he needs to stay until like January, I guess, of 2007.
I believe it's June 30th.
June, June 30th. Thank you. Okay. And, and one of the things, I'm running for city council, and the reason why I bring this up is because we all got interviewed by the police union. And one of the things that's happening in our city of Newport Beach is that we're not fully staffed. We're never fully staffed, but we're less fully staffed than we're ever, than we have ever been. And part of the problem is that we have policemen going to Anaheim Huntington Beach, out to the sheriff's department in LA, and out to places in the, in the middle of the country. So also, what was discussed is that we also have a morale problem in the city. And I know former mayor Todd Ridgway, you probably don't like me talking about this, and I don't like me talking about this either. But, I mean, I knew for a year and a half, when we had a house alarm go off in our system, and the policemen told me that they were very short-staffed and work a lot of hours. And I know that it takes a year to train someone, even if it's a lateral move. But I think we need to get a handle on all this, and I think we need to do better than what we've been doing, because it's not getting any better. And they say it's pay, but it's not even pay, it's morale. We need to issue permits for parking in a lot of areas in the city, and part of the problem is we don't even have enough police off, on in the wee hours of the night. The backup for Corona Del Mar comes from the peninsula. So I commend you for continuing the contract with the police chief, don't get me wrong. But we have some real problems, and you have to step up to the plate. You're the council, you're running for office. The only reason why we know this about here right now is because there is an election. The only reason why we've had all these things like emergency preparedness on the agenda after 10 years of, of talking about it, is because we have an election. And we shouldn't have to wait every two years to find things out. We should have a better handle on them. So thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. I would like to comment, as far as the emergency preparedness concerned, we have always had an emergency preparedness program, which has been administered by the fire program, fire department. And I believe that we are much better prepared than Dolores would infer that we are. Next, please.
I wouldn't really make a comment.
My name is Brenda Martin. I'm, I'm also running for city council, and it happens to be my district, my beat that's so sorely in need of additional police staff. And it was brought to our attention prior to this election, actually, when our neighborhood took action, because we were getting slow response, and the officers on, on duty were letting us know that there was a problem. I think I did speak about this a couple of times, so I just would like also to reiterate the concerns that we have about getting these situations resolved. Thank you.
Anybody else? City manager, approximately what is our shortage of policemen right now, as far as, what's our vacancy rates?
I'm trying to recall the numbers. We have right at 140 uniform positions, and we are eight short right now, which is not unusual. Eighteen months ago, we were 18 positions short. So this is kind of typical, as far as law enforcement right now. We get a, a number of department transfers into Newport Beach from other departments. We have some people in training and police academy. And as you know, in reviewing the budget, we also have some salary savings at the end of the year, because we are going to be short some positions when people either retire or leave for someplace else. And we have people come in in the academy, and the, the system works based upon there being a certain amount of shortage, and eight is not unusual.
So that's, let's see, 10% would be 14, so that's probably about a five, about seven, six percent. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment also on that issue. The, the issue that we have in Newport Beach is that we don't have a shortage of applicants for our police positions. It is that the city of Newport Beach has extremely high standards for our police officers. And that pays off, because we don't have the kind of misconduct or, or other kinds of issues that cities face that result in millions of dollars of lawsuits. That's why it's important for us to get the right kind of police officers, as we've done in the past, and to be very selective about it. Now, we are in the middle of going into a contract negotiation, and as was mentioned, it is an election, and I was pleased to be endorsed by the Police Employees Association. And I'm confident that we're going to be able to address the issues that are faced on the compensation front.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don, I did want to-
Mr. Nichols?
One of the things we were trying to get done was this integrated law and justice system, and that's, I think, gone somewhat longer than we expected. I just would certainly like to see that get done.
And the police chief is working, working on that. If I remember correctly, in some of the, the information that we've received, I believe that our police officers are paid about number three in the county. It's either three or four. I can't remember which one it is. It's just-
Two or three, I think.
Two or three. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion of this item, Mr. Mayor? Motion to approve the- Second. Item? Please vote. Thank you.
Motion carries.
That completes the consent calendar. We now go into public hearings. The first public hearing is on the Coal Center Newport, Garth Boulevard, general plan amendment. Is there a staff report on that?
I think Rosalind Young is doing that for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The coal company proposed to construct a two-story, 21,000-square-foot office building to function as the new corporate headquarters in the office site A of the Coal Center Newport Plan Community. This planned community has nine development sites, and each has specific allowable net floor area when adopted in 1972. Presently, Site A has no unbuilt square footage for the proposed development. However, Site B has remaining unused square footage of approximately 24,000 square feet for office, retail, and restaurant uses. This unbuilt floor area was authorized, but however, was not included in the original adoption of the 1988 land use element. To eliminate the discrepancy between the land use element and the Coal Center Newport Plan Community, the coal company is requesting an amendment to the land use element to increase the total gross floor area of approximately 24,000 square feet. The applicants also propose an amendment to the Coal Center Newport Plan Community to allow the transfer of 24,000 square feet from office area B to A in order to accommodate the proposed development. The planning commission review and recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the city council. The planning commission also evaluate the project in the context of the 1988 land use element and the 2006 land use element. If approved tonight, it would only amend the 1988 land use element. Should Measure V be approved in November, this proposed amendment would be, be bought back for reauthorization. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions by the council?
Mayor Webb, this project is located in my district. I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as recommended by staff.
I, I will second that subject. You're hearing from the citizens.
Well, that's, that's next. Thank you very much, Rosalind. I guess we have no questions. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item? This is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I close the public hearing. And is there any discussion in the council? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item is a public hearing on the planned community development amendment number 200604. And do we have a staff report on that? We've-
This one is-
Russell Buneum?
Russell Buneum, yes.
Welcome aboard. I think that you're one of our newer in planning employees. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a year today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmen, in response to a letter from the Bell Court Homeowners Association requesting to reduce the number of dwelling units and prohibit subdivisions in the planned community of the-
Try to speak more into the microphone, so everybody in the audience can hear you, please.
Excuse me. In response to a letter from the Bell Court Homeowners Association requesting to reduce the number of dwelling units and to prohibit subdivision in the aeronutronic forward plan community, councilmember Daigle requested staff to repair an amendment to the aeronutronic forward plan community. The initiation was approved unanimously by the city council. This item was heard by the planning commission, and the planning commission recommends approval of the ordinance to amend the planned community text. The plan, the, the PC text will read as follows. Excepted as authorized by a general plan amendment, no new residential subdivisions resulting in additional dwelling units are permitted. Lots that have legally merged through subdivision map act and the city subdivision code of approvals may be re-subdivided to the original underlying lot lines, or underlying lots to the extent permitted in the general plan. Staffs available for questions, should you have any.
Anybody have any questions? All right, let me open the public hearing. Any comments from the general public? Come forward and let's, let's know what your name is.
Hi, my name is Chris Sullivan, and I live in Corona Del Mar. And being rather unfamiliar with the processes here of city council, I guess I was supposed to have done something about agenda number nine earlier, because I would like to speak about that. Is this the time?
No, this is item 14.
Oh, okay. I thought you said comments from the public. I guess I thought it meant for anything. Oh, for item 14. Okay, so I need to go back to my seat. And then at the very end, is that when you-
There, we do have public comments, and if you have, on, they're supposed to be on non-agenda items, but we'll probably listen to what you have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment on this particular item on Bell Court?
Mr. Mayor?
Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
I would like to make a motion to approve this, as recommended by staff and the planning commission. And this amendment is to a planned community located in my district, and I see Mr. Almas, and Mr. Caves, and Mr. Almira. I know it's something very important to them and their community. And they came to me at the city requesting that-
I'll second the motion.
Can I just finish it? Okay. Requesting that we amend the planned community to retain the character of Bell Court. So we hope that your experience with city government was positive and productive, and that this will be approved.
I'll second the motion.
I thought Mr. Ridgeway did.
I, okay. I was polite enough to wait. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Curry?
I'm sorry. I would just note, as a former resident of Bell Court, that I know this is a very important issue to the homeowners there, and I applaud the staffer taking this action in response to the request and getting it done.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Hanley, and I'm a member of the coal, of a- My name is Robert Hanley, and I'm a member of the coalition in West San Ana Heights. And I'm asked almost daily, when are we going to be annexed? Are we going to be annexed? Is the issue. If we are to be held hostage because of banning ranch, and it can't be settled, we would really like to know about it. The mechanism that normally would be done there would be the PAC Committee, but we are poorly represented on the PAC Committee. In fact, as my buddy here and I went to the supervisor to complain about the situation and asked that that entity be selected by election. We were told that was a possibility, but it never came about. Now, our funds go into the redevelopment agency as much as the funds from the eastern section, and we are not seeing our share being done on our side. I recommend that anything that is used on those funds be for the entire community, not a select few. Thank you.
Thank you. Does there anybody else wish to comment in public comments? I think I recognize this face from the City Council.
Hi, this is John Heffernan, resident of the Port Streets over in Newport Beach. I'm here tonight to talk about compensation in the city. It arises from my board attempt to run for my office, where I was interviewed by the fire department, Jeff Borles and the fire union. And they basically talked about compensation. They talked about their forty thousand dollars and how they were going to hit every door and get their candidate elected. I said, "You better endorse, Mr. Curry." They did, and I decided not to run. Then I spent a lot of time in our finance department and tried to figure out some stark numbers, how people are getting paid. So I'm going to provide the city clerk this, my report, which is basically a report of compensation two thousand two, two thousand three, and the increases that have occurred over four years, and stark numbers about what, how people are being paid in the city. City manager's compensation, thirty-three percent for a year. Salary, twenty-four percent. Police chief, gone up forty-three percent total compensation for years, twenty-eight percent salary alone. The benefit load of the non-fire and police is roughly twenty-eight percent. Fire and police, it's running forty-eight percent. Chief of police, who's already on a full pension, from Calpers, though he worked for the city, is getting two hundred and four thousand dollars in salary and ninety-eight thousand dollars in benefits, for total compensation of three hundred and two thousand dollars. Four years ago, in the city, out of our thirty fire captains, none of them made, had total compensation package of more than a hundred and fifty thousand. Four years later, twenty-one out of thirty do. And I'll leave this with the city. This is all gonna, I've given it to the paper. And what it proved to me, and I'm mea culpa on me, I'm the guy that screwed up. I was the chairman of the finance committee, and I never looked at these numbers. We talked about the quartile, but we never stripped the quartile away and talked about the real number of what these salaries are. People assuming that the public, people work for the public get paid less, and their benefits are less. Well, this, I think, proves that the benefits are more. And part of this report is the active U.S. Marine Corps, where at war, their salary level. The full general in the Marine Corps salary, twenty-six years, is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, plus a housing allowance and a bunch of other benefits. Sort of puts it all in perspective. And it's not so much to say that our fire and police aren't doing a good job, or our city servants aren't doing a good job, because they are. But the problem is, our total compensation level is a hundred and one million dollars. So if it's going up four to six percent a year, there's six million dollars. And you can debate all you want about the debt service on a new city hall, but if you're going through this sort of amount of money every year, and that's sort of built in the system, then you better keep an eye on your employee base and what that's costing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to have a public comment?
My name is Chris Sullivan. I live in Corona del Mar. I had the chance to look at the staff report on Agenda Item Number Nine tonight regarding the citywide Wi-Fi proposal. And I have quite a few concerns, and I have some questions that I'd like you guys to look at and to think about that I don't think have been completely addressed in that staff report.
Excuse me, have you had an opportunity to talk to Dave Kiff about those? Because he's the one that is advising us on those items.
No, I don't. I haven't.
And he would be probably able to answer many of the questions. But go ahead, and you still have two more.
Relax, it's on my, okay, I narrowed it down to six. Six questions, okay. On page three, it changes to the draft RFP, saying encouraging proposers to use the best available technology to limit or eliminate the use of Wi-Fi network for predatory or illegal behavior. And my question to the city, as far as what to think about and look at, is can the city really keep the children off of these adult websites? You know, it's going to be widely available to anyone. Anyone can, any child could take their parent's laptop and then plug into adult websites. On page four, there was a description of work. It says Newport Beach reserves the right to direct the specific placement of franchisees' equipment to address neighborhood, resort, or other community aesthetic concerns. And my question is, is why are you not also addressing neighborhood, resort, or community health, safety, privacy? Remember that this radiation, this microwave radiation will be in all your homes, okay? Privacy, and also property value concerns. On page five, number eight, under work standards, it says the Wi-Fi firm agrees to follow direction in Newport Beach if it has determined that public health, safety, or welfare requires a modification from the plans and specifications or schedule of performance. And my question is, what is the basis for such determinations? The other questions I have are, on page six, number fourteen, indemnification. My question is, if a health-related lawsuit is filed against the city, who will be held responsible? The Wi-Fi company or the city for authorizing Wi-Fi without first doing research on the health issues caused by radio frequency microwave signals? Number twenty on that same page is compliance with laws. My question is, who will monitor emissions to make sure that they do not exceed the FCC safety guidelines? Number twenty-seven on the same page, books and records. The Wi-Fi firm shall maintain any and all records as agreed to by the parties and as required by law. And my question to the city is to think about, can the city really trust a Wi-Fi firm to self-monitor, especially when it comes, excuse me, to health and safety concerns? I have really big, like I said, concerns about this report. There seems to be no real mention about the safety and health issues that, about the health effects for non-ionizing radio frequency microwave radiation from Wi-Fi or WiMAX.
Your time is up. And I would suggest that you submit all of those comments to Dave Kiff.
Okay, Dave Kiff?
Yes, he's our assistant city manager, and he's the one that's handling the project.
All right.
Let me give his phone number. Do you have a PIN?
Yep, I have a PIN. Hang on.
Six, four, four...
Whoops, hang on.
Three, oh...
Three, zero, zero, two.
Three, zero, zero, two. Dave Kiff.
I don't call that. I call three, oh, three, two.
Three, zero, zero, two.
Three, zero. Anyway, thank you very much for letting me speak. I really appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
He's right over there. That gentleman right there.
Okay. All right, Dave. There I come. Hi, good evening. My name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. I got to see some of the official disaster preparedness information.
And this was a very confusing time to send this, because it also came with all of the political information, since we're in the midst of a campaign. So it might be moved the city to mail it again after the campaign is over. I go, Todd, I just love the way you just do all that.
I actually agree with you on that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. We do agree on a lot of things. Okay, I want to start by saying that we probably have one of the best cert programs in the county. We don't have enough of them, all right? I don't really think that this, that these two pieces of paper qualify with the National Weather Service and NOAA as really being public outreach, okay? They're a good first start, but we're not there. The talk this afternoon talked about three designated shelter sites. I'd like to know where they are, because people are going to watch this. First of all, it should have been at nighttime. You should have had this for everyone to be able to see it, okay? Not in an afternoon study session. Something as important as this for the public. This is supposed to be about the public. Remember, the residents that live here, okay? Three shelter sites, we don't know where they are. Then it cost about sirens. The one program that I went to and wrote about in my column, because I've been talking about this subject for ten years and wrote about many columns on it, was, and when we were there, it was about the Katrina people and the firemen, and they showed slides, and it was absolutely excellent. It was honestly called a town hall meeting, but nobody knew about it. So I was wondering if we have that mass calling system yet, Homer, that you got. If we had something like that, then we could have these town hall meetings. It was three thousand dollars. That was something that we were supposed to get. Do you guys remember? Okay, anyway, the sirens cost anywhere between two hundred and fifty dollars to, two hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars. And we're looking for grant money. It kind of reminds me of when we had to cover Big Canyon Reservoir. We were looking for grant money. We have a hundred and ninety-two million dollar budget. We spend a hundred and one million dollars now, I find out, on salaries. I think we should spend anywhere between two hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars on a warning system. The reason why I asked about ABEL is because they said that we were going to use the helicopter. Now, if we have a big disaster, we share our helicopters. I don't know how many we have. I thought we had two. But Costa Mesa might need a helicopter, too, and we can't hog it all for us, okay? So maybe, you know, or maybe the helicopter might not even be able to get up off the ground in an emergency, because maybe it would have been in an earthquake or in a flood. So maybe we really need this warning system. It's not that much money, and I don't understand why we're, this is like dimes to this city. And again, mass calling system hasn't been implemented. I don't know, I just have a lot of questions. I'm going to run out of time. But I think it's a good first step. But by no way should I think we qualify to be tsunami-ready by hanging a few signs up there and saying that we're going to send a helicopter around and warn people. There were six hundred calls. Went to the police department. What did the police department say to these people? I remember Mr. Hen on the Planning Commissioner freaking out because his daughter didn't know what to do, how to get it, how to go anywhere, or where to go. So I'm not saying we don't have a plan, but we need a better plan, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dolores. Anybody else wish to have a public comment?
I'm Louise Funenburg, president of Central Newport Beach Community Association. And I want to thank you for the fireworks. We had a beautiful time. I was at Fifteenth Street all day, so I don't know what went on with the other two peers, but it was a great party. And the association handed out about three thousand of these little pins for everybody to have a happy birthday. And I want to thank the council and the city. It was marvelous. Thank you.
Those were good fireworks. I remember those.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Michael Glover, and I'm a candidate for the Assembly in Seventieth District, which includes Newport Beach, Irvine, Lake Forest, and other communities here in this area. I'm a, just a few minutes, just want to introduce myself. I'm a former prosecutor, City of Lawrence, Lawrence, Kansas, for seven years. I was also the assistant city attorney there. So I've got a lot of experience with city issues, and I think I could serve you well in the Assembly in that regard. I was also a member of the Kansas Legislature for seven years, so I know a little bit about how legislatures work and about the fact that the, I think the Orange County needs a good representation in the majority party in the Assembly, and I think I could do a good job for you in that respect. I live in Lake Forest. I've been in the area for about eighteen years. I'm a defense attorney and raised my kids in Saddleback Valley Schools and University, Kansas, excuse me, Kansas, yeah, that Kansas and California mixed up sometimes. California universities. My daughter went to UCSB, my son went to Cal State LA. So just a few minutes of your time to let you know that there hopefully will be a competitive race here, and that I'd be glad to answer any questions. My website's www.michael glover dot org. And I would appreciate an opportunity to answer any questions and/or if I'm so selected, to be a privilege to serve you in the Assembly in the state of California. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Anybody else wish to have a public comment? All right, closed public comments. The next item is oral reports from City Council members. We don't have anything new on the local coastal plan. Newport Coast Advisory Committee report Marina Park planning. We're going to have that discussion as a separate item later. Does anybody else wish to have a committee report that's not listed? Seeing none, let's go on to the Planning Commission agenda.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the Planning Commission's report is for three items on their last agenda. The first item that was discussed on their agenda was a general plan amendment for the Big Canyon Country Club, a request of ten thousand square feet. And that item was recommended for approval and will come to the City Council on November the fourteenth, if needed. The, that amendment was actually covered in the general plan update. So if the general plan amendment succeeds on November seventh, then there will be no need to bring it forward for your consideration. The second item was our annual review of our housing element implementation plan, and that was a receive-and-file report. It was forwarded to the council for your final approval, and that will come on your agenda of October the twenty-fourth. The last item and the most significant item on the agenda was a development project on the Balboa Peninsula called Newport Bay Marina. It is at twenty-three hundred Newport Boulevard, and it is where the South Coast Shipyard currently exists, as well as a number of businesses surrounding on the same property. It's a fairly complicated project. It did take staff a bit of time to bring forward. However, it is a project that would be a residential and commercial mixed use on two-point-four acres, twenty-seven dwelling units, along with sixty, thirty-six thousand square feet of commercial development, both office and retail. And there were a number of issues and concerns discussed by the Planning Commission in regards to this project, including the fact that residential uses were being introduced in an area where there are a number of existing boatyard businesses, and whether those two uses would be compatible over the long term. There was also concerns about whether the new Marina slip configuration was such that it could support a higher use for charter boat activities, which have been discussed in the community fairly recently. And they've requested staffer more information on their ability to limit or even prohibit charter activities from this property. They were very concerned about the parking management plan and the construction management plan, most particularly the construction management plan and how workers during construction would be accommodated, and also how heavy construction vehicles and all of the other things associated with a large-scale construction project that includes subterranean grading and construction could be managed in that area, which is highly congested during certain times of the year. And the Planning Commission did give staff substantial direction for additional information, and they continued it to their meeting of...
November the second.
Yeah, November the second. And we will have to see how the applicant, oh, I'll tell you about the November meetings in a minute. The, we'll have to see how well the applicant is able to pull together all of the extra information that the Planning Commission requested of them to know whether that will proceed at that time or not. The commission has decided, because of the fact that their second meeting in November would normally occur on Thanksgiving Day in the month of November, to reschedule both their meetings to November second and November the sixteenth. And that concludes my report.
Any questions of Ms. Temple?
Yes, I'm mayor.
Mr. Salich.
Does this project come to the last one that the Planning Commission considers? Does that come to the council, and does that stop at the Planning Commission?
It does not automatically come to City Council.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much. The next item is continued business, the Marina Park Concept Plan. Is Mr. Kiff going to give us a report on that?
Yes, he is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to do a brief PowerPoint presentation. I may need the lights there. Mr. Salich, thank you.
And then after Dave does that, I maybe like to make a couple of comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the first time that the public in general, as well as some of the council members who have not been working on this concept plan, have seen it. So it's in your staff report. It'll also be on the screen on the next slide, and it's up on the wall here. And this is, it doesn't quite have a name, so I called it the Park and Marina Concept Plan. And this is it in front of us here. You can see to the left a park plan that is identical to the Protect Our Parks Plan. And to the right, there is a visitor-serving marina, along with a relocation of the American Legion's parking lot and a reduction in the small park there off of 15th Street. That's how you can accommodate the marina without impacting the parking for the American Legion. I'm going to come back to this slide, because I imagine you'll have comments on it. I want to kind of discuss sort of where this process has been, and then some of the comments that have come up since the staff report's been produced. One of the most integral parts of this discussion has been working with the American Legion, and the American Legion wanted to make it clear to you and to the public that this is what they've said about that proposed plan, that they've reviewed it and notified us that they agree that we should develop it further, but they're reserving the right to further negotiate the exact terms of participation as the project develops and the initial concept is better defined. So their membership did hear this in September, and this is the statement that they've, that they reviewed and approved. We also had some comments from the Girl Scout Council of Orange County, and this is two slides, because it was fairly detailed comments, that they are supportive of the plan as well, provided that it allows them at least 2,800 square feet, and they have the ability to put in those items listed there. And in actuality, the footprint of the plan is 2,900 square feet, so it does meet that, and it's expandable to 3,900 square feet.
What do they have today?
I had understood that it's in the range of 2,800 as well, but. Continuing with their comments, they've also asked for an enclosed area, which is actually envisioned in the plan, and these things, they also have proposed that they should be able to enter into a new no-cost 50-year lease, four parking spaces, and someplace provided to house the Girl Scout Council during construction. And I just note that the overall site plan under this concept is large enough to accommodate those things that they're requesting. Again, I'll bounce back to the concept plan for questions and comments, but if you like this plan, we're seeking your direction to proceed down this path, and that would be we'd enter into what's called the preliminary design phase, which involves basically three parts. We do additional testing of the concept to make sure there's no fatal flaws, that we know exactly where the utilities are, the record of survey. And if it does indeed pass that test, then we'd go to a period of community outreach, because as I've noted, not a lot of folks have seen this plan. We do think that people will like it. Everybody that you have shown it to has reacted that way. So that community outreach plan would be a part of Phase 1. Then there'd be a refinement and a cost estimate developed, including making sure we know exactly what our CEQA obligations are and our anticipated permitting requirements. As you might guess, those permitting requirements are extensive, from the regional board to the US Army Corps, to Fish and Game, potentially, certainly to the Coastal Commission. And that, again, would address the cost estimates as well. At the same time, in that phase, we would work with you to propose an amendment to the city's lease with the Legion to accommodate this. And then the next phase, again, after probably six to eight months, would be actual design development and permitting, where we'd go through that process, bringing the plan up to construction documents with all CEQA work being done, and then a funding plan fully developed, because this could be a costly proposal. As the, as the working group has discussed, it's probably something that would occur in phases, just because of the funding. And then Phase 3, construction, if it were in one phase, the financing plan, the development completed, we put out to bid for construction, including construction management. So with that, I'll jump back to the concept plan and welcome your comments. That's the end of my presentation.
Mr. Ridgeway had indicated he wanted to make a few comments.
Actually, you covered it pretty well. I just would make one comment. Dave, down at the, at the lower right where it says Visitors Marina Services Building, I believe that's one story, not two stories.
This one right here?
Yeah. It says two stories on here, but it's actually one story. It's showers and lockers. So that's it. That was the only thing. I know there's a representative from the Legion here tonight, and I did talk to him today, and want to make sure that it is understood that the executive committee and the general membership only agreed to this conceptually, but based upon that representation, the city is moving forward with, as you said, a record of survey and design, you know, some conceptual design work. And I know our city attorney has certainly looked at a potential amendment to the lease, but there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done, as you just suggested.
Thank you. I'd note, too, Mr. Mayor, that Dan Herman is here with Rabbin Herman Design. Dan did the design work initially, working for POP, Protect Our Parks, and then we eventually brought him on to work on this design. He exclusively worked for the city in this project.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody in the council wish to have a, Mr. Nichols?
It appears, Dave, and I think I heard you say it, that the entire slips are, were on American Legion property, are they not?
No, that's not correct. The property line is roughly right around there, so they're about half on.
About half on it?
Yes.
Well, that, they had to remove the whole parking lot in the back there, Don, and they moved it around to the grassy area.
This grassy area went out about like so, and so that what they're doing is the parking is being shifted this direction, and there's actually an increase in the number of parking places.
But the space the Legion has and the amount of room that they have for their boating has been reduced very, very significantly. As well.
Actually, it has.
As their dry space.
Actually, that's not true. We were, we respected all their dry storage and their docks, and actually, they will actually have a net increase of dock space when this plan is finally done.
One of the things that we had mentioned in our negotiations was that...
It's really amazing, since it's in less area, how you can give more dock space in less area.
Mr. Nichols, one of the things that we had talked about with the American Legion is that they would be made whole, and that their revenue-producing areas, which are slip spaces and dry storage, as well as parking, would be at least as good as it is today, if not better.
Well, I'd like to know how that's done, but, Don, because the, the spaces along the front there that they have for putting boats, and they also have a dock out front of that.
I think that, Mr. Nichols, it would be easier to have you meet with Mr. Kiff and let him explain that to you, but...
You could bring the architect, too.
And the architect, because we have worked very hard in making sure that we keep the American Legion with at least the same number of spaces, and we think that we can give them maybe a couple of more spaces to rent out.
And just a comment, I would second that, Dick, why don't you meet with Dave and or sit with me, but I would make a comment that the executive committee to the Legion actually unanimously approved this twice. So I'm not sure where you're going with your comments.
Well, Mike, that's a very big legion. They deserve a reasonable space. They had a lease on a much larger space, and it seems to me that, that we shouldn't take the whole works out of the American Legion.
But they're taking our park.
They're taking whose park?
The city's park. It was not the American Legion park. The park that was right here.
That park area, and actually, they're going to probably encroach into the alley a little bit there actually. Have we done a measurement of net land area?
That's part of the record of survey, which is underway.
Okay.
These are, this is a conceptual plan, and we will have more precise answers later on. Anybody else in the council wish, have any comments or questions?
Just, if I could, Mr. Mayor, to say that when I first came on the council, this was one of the most divisive issues that faced us, and I want to commend Dave and Councilman Ridgeway and the entire community group that worked together to put this plan together as a consensus plan and bring it back. And I think it really reflects the council reaching out to create a consensus on what was a very divisive issue before, and I commend you for it, and I think it's a great plan.
I should mention, since you brought that up, Mr. Currie, I need to credit Mr. Selich especially for pulling those groups together, Mr. Ridgeway, Mayor Webb. And then the people, also the others who participated, which were Tom Billings with POP, and John Coro, and Tim Collins with the Harbor Commission. Everybody worked together in a really cooperative spirit, so thank you.
That they did, and I, when Mr. Selich suggested this plan, I thought, gosh, Ed, I want you to be with me when I negotiate and discuss this with the Legion. So, and, but the Legion, you guys have been terrific, quite candidly.
Okay, I'd like to open this up to get public comments. Don't be bashful.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tom Billings, Newport resident and founder of Protect Our Parks. And just to echo kind of that last comment that was made about the collaboration that took place with this committee of Mayor Webb, Councilmember Ridgway, and Councilmember Selich, and then some other members from the commission and the community, and Dave Kiff, including our group, it was really a great experience when we got down to the, those, which I call kind of closed-session meetings, after four years of really fighting the battle, I'll speak from the residents' point of view, as Protect Our Parks, you know, it was, it was, it was a battle. And I got called on some things by Mr. Ridgway, and we called them on other issues, and it was battled first over the hotel and No On L. And so I just want to thank the residents that are out there today. And again, I realize that it's not reality yet. We still have a lot of work to do. The mobile homes are slated to be removed, and that may take some time, but I think we have something in place. So I'd just like to thank the residents, the 20,000 supporters of No On L who voted to keep it public parkland instead of a hotel, Dan Herman of Rabbin Herman Design, who's our architect, now the city architect, and then, as I said, the council. And again, especially kudos to Councilmember Selich, who was really kind of the mastermind that created this, this solution that was able to accommodate our park plan on the left and then the marina in collaboration with the Legion. And I realize that's still some things that are possibly even worked out, but it looks like, you know, we've come a long way, so thank you, Ed, for that. And I've also, you know, thought, I think I've seen some of Ed's ideas with the city hall and central location as well, and creative design for that, and I think that's a positive direction, too. So, you know, just on a positive note, it's just a great victory for the community, and we're really happy to see it all happening. And I just want to throw in, you know, it wasn't brought up by Dave, and then thank you, Dave, of course, Dave's been coordinating and all, but I would like to just make a recommendation to, and I sent an email today, but just to make it public record, of a project team, advisory team, and Dave had it in his agenda item, but the people that I would like to recommend are, one, Councilmember Selich, two, a public works representative, three, one POP rep, four, one Park and Rec rep, and then two community association reps from Central Newport and Peninsula Point. And then finally, Billy Whitford of Newport Aquatic Center, who would be, will be a great asset in developing the aquatic center portion of the, of the park elements. So anyway, those are my recommendations. I can write them down and give them to you or give them to Dave, but, oh, yeah, Harbor Commissioner as well. No, I forgot.
Dave's programmed you, too, huh?
So anyway, thanks to everybody, and I look forward to working, you know, as we move forward with these phases, and, and just a great victory.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment on this? Seeing none. The item here is review and discuss a concept plan and offer further direction to the city staff as to designs needed, community outreach. Do we agree with Mr. Kiff's recommendations to go forward?
We do.
Is that, there really isn't a motion that's needed here. Is there a city manager?
No.
Actually, it was to inform the remaining members of council. There's four that have not seen this.
Thank you very much. The next item of business, then, is the council policy manual update for 2006.
Mr. Mayor, we go from the interesting to the not very interesting at all. This is a thing that we are directed by council policy to come to you once each year to update what's called the council policy manual. And for the folks at home, the policy manual is on the web. You can see any one of more than 100 different policies that are not codified, they're not code and law, but they're given to staff as guidance to do everything from the acceptance of gifts for the library, to room reservations, to encroachments. So this staff report asks that you consider and approve the proposed revisions to the council policy manual. I'm not going to go through each one unless you had questions. I will go through one, however, that Mr. Webb, Mayor Webb, brought up. I'm going to note, too, for the public, that the public agenda did not note that we're changing item K9. K9 doesn't have to do with dogs on the beach, but it has to do with code enforcement. It's in your packet. It's in the packet that the public received, so I believe that notification is adequate. But if there are no questions, I jump to page 62 with you, the handwritten page 62, with a suggestion that Mr. Mayor Webb made under Roman numeral small v, or five, and we change that underscored area to new plant materials that have been approved under a separate California Coastal Commission permit.
So it's new instead of any?
Yes, and clarifying that they, this is an exception to what's called our oceanfront encroachment policy. So these types of plant materials would be acceptable if they were approved by the Coastal Commission, and as you know, we've had some discussion about that this year.
Where is this?
This is on page 62, handwritten page 62.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who wish to comment on any of these items? Seeing none? Do I have a motion of the city council with the one change?
Move to approve it.
With the one change that Mr. Kiff said?
Yes.
On L12. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 18 is the cooperative agreement with the county of Orange and the Orange County Development Agency regarding following issues within or adjacent to the city's sphere of influence. It's called Sphere Issues, the John Wayne Airport and Santa Ana Heights Newport Bay. Who's going to give the report on that?
I will give it, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased, after three-plus years of discussion among elected officials of the county and the city, and also the respective staffs, to bring a spheres agreement to you tonight for your consideration and hopeful approval. I have a PowerPoint tonight, and let me just give a brief overview of the information that's going to be covered. We're going to look at a quick history of the spheres discussions and how they came about, and we'll look at what's in the agreement, the provisions regarding John Wayne Airport, Santa Ana Heights redevelopment projects, of which there are two, and the Newport Bay studies. Then we'll talk about what's next and how the public can receive more information on this proposed agreement. Talking about a quick history, we have to go back to 2002, when the last John Wayne settlement agreement was entered into, and the city council at that time asked staff what else we could do to protect Newport Beach from John Wayne Airport growth. I think everybody felt very good about that settlement agreement. We had to give something up, but we felt like we protected the city as far as passenger caps and as far as number of loud aircraft using John Wayne until January the 1st of 2016. But council immediately then asked the question, where can we go from here? How can we better protect the community from long-range expansion of John Wayne? So we kicked around how best to approach staff regarding John Wayne and limitations on John Wayne. And we put together a series of issues that we thought would be good to approach the county with and interest the county in, so that we could talk about John Wayne, but also talk about how the city and the county could better cooperate on issues that we really have in common. Of course, there's John Wayne Airport. We talked about the Coyote Canyon landfill, which is a county-owned landfill, and maybe the possibility... is a county-owned landfill, and maybe the possibility about the city taking over that landfill site in ownership. We put together the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment area issues, and how to interest the county in maybe taking over the redevelopment agency, at least that portion that is in the city. Then the Newport Bay, both lower and upper, and Newport Dunes. So, except for the landfill issue, which dropped out, I think you can start with John Wayne and just move to Santa Ana Heights, the Upper Bay and the Lower Bay, and the whole strip comes together as far as the issues that we really focused our attention on over the last three years, in terms of how we could better cooperate, how we could better provide services and, and serve our users. With the philosophy that if we would start from scratch, how would we administer these areas tomorrow? Would we do it the same way today? And we wanted to think outside the box. The city council formed the Sphere's Issues Ad Hoc Committee in December of 2003, and the current members are Mayor Webb, Mayor Protem Rozansky, Councilmember Ridgway, with staff members, at that time Bob Burnham was still city attorney, Dave Kiff and myself are the three staff members who have been most involved in these discussions. So then through December of 2003 through September of 2006, almost three years, there were a number of meetings that took place with the County of Orange officials, both from the city, I mean, CEO's office, supervisors, county council, and other staff, depending upon the issues that we were discussing. There were periodic updates to the city council and to the committee. Then we had numerous drafts and redrafts of proposed cooperative agreements. There were more meetings and more redrafts. I thought maybe three months ago, we were ready to bring this agreement forward, and it has been difficult. It seems like new issues crop up, new concerns crop up, issues drop out. But we have a solid agreement today, and I think an agreement that both this staff and the county executive officer staff feels comfortable about bringing to our respective elected officials. So what's in the proposed agreement? Let's talk about the provisions regarding John Wayne. And let me, let me state, I think it is very telling that the agreement that comes before you tonight is only seven pages. What does that tell you? It tells you it wasn't negotiated by attorneys. It was negotiated with direction given from elected officials to elected officials, county and city, with staff getting together and saying, how best can we implement what we heard from our elected officials? So we have an agreement that I think talks about a partnership. It certainly talks about a partnership regarding John Wayne, but also other issues, with the thinking that if we can form a partnership on these issues, there are a lot of other issues that are in our collective interest that maybe we can form other partnerships regarding. But regarding John Wayne, what this agreement would do, the agreement says that the city and county would confirm that. First of all, the county has exclusive jurisdiction over John Wayne. It does that today, it's always had that. John Wayne is in county territory, it isn't within any city's sphere, be that Costa Mesa or Newport Beach or Santa Ana. It says that the city of Newport Beach would not annex any John Wayne Airport property without the county's consent. And that is state law right now, that we couldn't annex any of John Wayne without the property owner's consent, and in this case, that property owner is the county. The city says that we agree to become a consistent agency. That's a designation that is provided by the John Wayne Airport Enviren's Land Use Plan. It's like the airport's master plan regarding land use, and it also establishes the land uses that it would like to see on surrounding properties and other jurisdictions around the airport. And the city of Newport Beach has never been a consistent agency. That means that our land use regulations are not in conformance with John Wayne's land use regulations. This agreement, and through the new general plan that is being proposed, would make us a consistent agency, and that was something that was very important to the county. And lastly, if the county wanted to add a second commercial air carrier runway, or expand the current air carrier runway to the south, that the county would submit these plans to the city. The city council could then either support or not support the county's plans, and the agreement says that the county would abide by the city council's decision. And of course, that is the key provision in this agreement for the city. It's where we started out three years ago, trying to come up with a way of better protecting the community from John Wayne expansion. And we think a second commercial air carrier runway is the biggest threat that John Wayne poses to this community, because it could fan out planes on both sides of the Upper Bay and really affect all of the residents in the community with that second runway. Elsewhere in the proposed agreement, we talk about Santa Ana Heights redevelopment area. The discussions mainly for the last year centered around the redevelopment agency issues, and because of reasons at the county, those discussions didn't bear fruit in this agreement. But there are a couple of issues that are included in the agreement, and the first is the Mesa Birch Park. It's something that the people in Santa Ana Heights have wanted for a long time, so it would finally be implemented through this agreement, where the city would be able to design, build, and maintain the park at Mesa Birch. The county would still be the owner of the park. The city would be able to spend up to half a million dollars in redevelopment funds to design and construct the park. So the, we would do that, and the county would reimburse us to half a million dollars. And the city would have to demify the county, and the city would maintain the park at our general fund expense, which we estimate to be approximately $20,000 a year. We do think that there is the opportunity down the line to assume ownership of this park, but at least we get the park built to the benefit of the residents at this time. The second provision talks about the proposed Mesa Drive multi-use trail. The agreement says that the county officially does not oppose any attempts by the city to delete a proposed Mesa Drive multi-use trail from the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. Now, as you remember, when we annexed East Santa Ana Heights, the provision of that annexation was that since Santa Ana Heights had a specific plan, that if the city wanted to change that specific plan, we would have to go to the county and get the county's permission to do so. So what this provision does, and it was put in the agreement very near the end of our discussions by the county, it enables the county, if, at the meeting in which they discussed this agreement, if they adopt it, the county is saying that we are not opposed to the city of Newport Beach amending the Santa Ana Heights specific plan if they want to delete a proposed Mesa Drive multi-use trail. Let me be very clear what this agreement doesn't say. If the city council does approve this agreement tonight, it doesn't do away with the Mesa Drive multi-use trail. It doesn't delete it from the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. What this provision says is that the county would give us its approval if it passes or approves this agreement, but then, this city council at another meeting, on another agenda, would have to take up this issue if you wanted to decide whether the Mesa Drive multi-use trail would be deleted from the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. So it doesn't commit the city to any action. It may be that this issue never comes up, but if this agreement is approved by the county, the county's side of the approval for the amendment to the specific plan has been taken care of. The city's would not be taken care of unless there was an agenda item sometime in the future.
Homer, would we have to go to get the county's approval if we wanted to construct the trail?
No.
Okay, so if we want to delete the trail, we don't have to have county's approval? If we want to construct the trail, we don't have county's approval?
If we delete the trail, we do have to have the county's approval. This agreement would give us that approval, but it wouldn't mean that we would decide to do that. It would enable us to do that if we wanted to at a future date.
Okay, it doesn't indicate which way, so that we have to go through the process of public hearings, we have to look at our staff to come up with whatever comments, recommendations they might have related to the presence or absence of the trail, and then go through a full public hearing process.
That's right. So if the council were to approve this agreement tonight, and the Board of Supervisors would approve the same agreement on the 17th, as we think it's going to be on their agenda, the trail would not go away on the specific plan. The only way it would go away is if the city council took it up at a future agenda and decided to amend the specific plan by deleting that trail. But if those two actions were taken by you tonight and by the Board of Supervisors on the 17th, without any other action from the city council 10 months from now or 10 years from now, that trail would still be in the Santa Ana Heights specific plan.
Homer, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I appreciate that this comes from the county side of the fence, this request. It seems to me that some would say that this kind of provision is somewhat unusual for this agreement, and I'm wondering if the authority to delete that trail lies elsewhere, specifically in a letter from Supervisor Silva?
Well...
From the county's side.
I, I think the attorneys would say that it's something that the whole board needs to approve.
Okay.
And they would do so if they wanted to, through the approval of this agreement. But certainly, it is our specific plan now for Santa Ana Heights, and we would have to take the action in order to change it finally.
Okay.
It, it is a joint decision that would need to be made in order to amend the plan. And the county, if they approve this agreement, would be approving, saying whatever the city wants to do, they're okay with.
Okay, and then this is a provision that the county is asking for?
Yes, it is.
Homer, is, is this trail a identified improvement in the capital improvements program for the redevelopment agency?
I don't think it is, Dave. Could you correct me?
I hear a voice from the audience. Mr. Selich, it is a part of what the Santa Ana Heights Project Advisory Committee considers its, its budgeted A-list plan, so, but yet, the county itself would have to specifically appropriate funds for it. They have funds set aside, but they haven't specifically appropriated funds.
Okay, thank you.
So that if, if we wanted to construct the trail, we would still have to go to the county and get the money to do it?
Unless the city chose to use other funds to do the trail. One of the reasons that this, the trail has not been done to date is because part of the, the trail could be constructed now, but there are enough poles in the way that the undergrounding project, which is proposed for this area, would address the poles, and then the thought was, once the poles are down, the trail would make a lot more sense.
If there are no further questions on this provision, I'll move on with the rest of the agreement. Let's talk about the two studies that are slated for Newport Bay. The agreement proposes that there would be two different studies involving Newport Bay. One would deal with the Upper Newport Bay Nature Preserve, which is a county-owned regional park. The city and county would co-fund a comprehensive resource management plan, almost like a, a master plan for the Upper Bay, to address education, restoration, and public access at the Upper Bay. And this comprehensive plan would begin when the county says that the county's strategic planning effort is done, and that may be as far as 18 months out. The city's funding share is about 80%, and the city would have to pay DF and G the share, and our share for Big Canyon, which is why our percentage is up to 80%. But what this plan would do is, I think, for the first time, the interest groups, including the city and the county, and people that are really interested in the naturalist, would come together and basically work out a comprehensive plan as to how the management of the Upper Bay is going to take place. And we really haven't had that, we haven't had all of the users that have gotten together and ironed that out, and I think this is a big positive for the community, that even though the county would still own most of the Upper Bay and would still manage the Upper Bay, it would be managed based upon a plan that was developed by the user interest groups, and something that we could feel very good about. The second study is the...
What's the estimated cost of that plan?
We think our portion would be, I think, $300,000. So it would be about $400,000.
And what is, can you go back to the previous slide there? What is the strategic planning effort? I'm not sure I understand that one.
That's a current effort, Mr. Selich, that the county's Harbors, Beaches, and Parks Division, that's the HBP acronym, has embarked upon probably 12 months ago. They're doing public hearings throughout all the five supervisory districts to paint their own picture as to how the county should be managing its Harbors, Beaches, and Parks in the future. And we had been requested through this cooperative agreement not to start our CRMP, our plan for Upper Newport Bay, because it is a county facility until that process is done. They thought that if we started too early, then we would somehow prejudice their overall process in looking at all their park assets.
Okay, then my last question is on the third bullet point, on the DFG share and our share for Big Canyon Creek Nature Park. How does that affect what we've already budgeted for that, that project we've gone on there? Are we adding to that, and how much are we adding to what we've already committed?
The Big Canyon Creek Nature Park project would, would not actually be planned within this CRMP beyond what is already proposed. That, it's only identified there because it counts as a part of the acreage that would contribute to the funding calculation. I don't know if that answered your question, but we don't anticipate more planning for Big Canyon Creek. What we're doing already would be incorporate...
Okay, so, so our share, what we're spending for Big Canyon, that stays the same, but we're going to have to pick up a share for DF and G?
For Fisher Creek, yes. And we also have Back Bay Drive and some slopes around the area, and Back Bay Drive is an access point, would be a part of the plan.
And what's the estimate for the DF and G share that we're going to pay?
We're probably picking up, that's probably more than half of our share, upwards of 75%.
So about $150,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason for, you know, picking up the 80% in that is certainly a high percentage is that this, this comprehensive plan is going to be very, very valuable for the Upper Bay and also for the community, and for the users. And we think that's a very good thing, and if it takes us to fund most of it, well, then that is money well spent, and that is something that the county gets out of this, which would be a good management plan, and they only pay about 20% of it.
Well, I'm not questioning that, I'm just trying to understand how, how this fits into the bigger picture of other commitments we've made out there, so we know what our total costs are going to be.
Okay.
Not only for this, but other things we're doing.
The Lower Bay study, in the agreement, the city and county would co-fund a study of the services that are provided by each of us in the Lower Bay. Those include mooring administration, harbor patrol, Tylands administration, and there are some others also. And this Lower Bay services study would begin when the county says that the Harbors, Beaches, and Parks strategic planning effort, again, is done. That was the one Dave just referred to. And the city's funding share to be determined based upon the ownership of Tylands in the Lower Bay, but we would estimate that our funding share would be about $100,000 for the one-time cost of that study.
What would our share of the cost be on a yearly basis? Because we'd be now doing more than study.
No, this, this is just a study, so the agreement also says that none of the services are going to be changed, are going to be provided by anybody else unless there is a joint agreement that that will be done. So we're certainly not going to pick up harbor patrol services or...
But would we pick up dredging?
We will, we will pick up nothing. This is just a study to show who does what. Are there some economies of scale that might be available to us, should we want to take advantage of them? And does it make any sense for whoever is providing some of those services, services for them to be provided by a different agency?
In the Upper Bay, though, you spoke of, of Big Canyon Creek, it would be $100,000 there a year, and $300,000 in the Upper Bay, right?
No, we're not talking...
Would that be additive?
We're not talking about an ongoing cost in the Upper Bay. What we're just committing to is the plan, the development of the plan, and it would probably take two years in order to develop the plan. So what we would be committing to is paying 80% of the cost of developing the plan, and then there would be no other cost that we would have on an ongoing basis unless a delay... at a later date, we agreed to do that, but certainly not through this agreement.
So then we would only have the cost of the Shellmaker Island that we have ongoing there? I mean, paying off the debt that was...
Yes, but we would have that even if we didn't have this agreement.
Yeah, I'm not, but we have that as well.
That's true. And we also have some capital improvement projects, I guess the Big Canyon project that we are contributing to. Okay, so what is next? There's a council consideration and hopefully your vote tonight. I mentioned on October the 17th, a week from today, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors will have this agreement for their consideration. Should both of those bodies approve this agreement, then we would implement the park project. The design for that park is already done, but we would need to go to bid again. We think it's going to be less than $500,000. We would do the preparation for the new, two Newport Bay studies, but that work probably isn't going to get started for half a year to a year and a half, based upon the county's timeframe of them getting their strategic plan done. And then there's also the possibility of revisiting the redevelopment agency and us taking over that portion of the redevelopment agency in Santa Ana Heights that is within the city's jurisdiction. We had talked before and hoped to bring into this agreement the Newport Dunes transfer from the county to the city and possibly some other Thailands. That didn't happen, but again, we think that there's an opportunity to revisit these two issues at a later date, and if the council wants to do that, develop separate agreements in which those could happen. For more information, people can go to the city's website. It's the same website we've been telling people ever since we've developed a website, You can call the city manager's office and speak to someone for more information. That would be myself or Dave Kiff, and that's a 949-644-3000 number. Or you can email us, Dave or myself, at city.nuitport-beach.ca.us. You know, we started off embarking on this agreement about three and a half years ago when the council said, how can we protect the community better against things that may be outside of the settlement agreement? And we specifically zeroed in on the potential for a second commercial runway, and this agreement would provide that to this community, should the city council and the Board of Supervisors approve this agreement. We think that the last three and a half years have really developed an opportunity to form some good partnerships, because we've had a lot of discussions. A lot of those discussions have been difficult discussions, but I think a level of trust has been developed, certainly between county and city staffs, and I think that is going to carry over to the elected officials to where we can see where we can break down some of the walls, we can really benefit our residents by doing some things differently that maybe makes some sense, maybe costs us a little bit of money, but the benefit to our residents is certainly there. So I think that this is just a start of a cooperative, more cooperative relationship than we've ever had with the county, and real pleased that it has the John Wayne component, because that's what got us here tonight. Thank you very much. Mr. Selich?
I just want to be clear on one thing. We're not removing the trail. I'm getting back on that trail issue in this agreement. And in order to change anything regarding that trail, we'd have to amend our general plan, we'd have to amend our LCP, and we would have to amend the specific plan.
I don't think... I think all we'd have to amend is the specific plan. So that would require a count...
Well, I looked in the printed version of the general plan, and the trail's still on there. If I read the diagram right.
It's not supposed to be. The council directed us to take it off.
It's in the printed version you gave me.
Well, we'll fix that.
Sounds like you have a catch there.
Okay, we just have to amend the specific plan then.
That's what we think right now. And let me...
And this is a specific...
Excuse me. And it's my understanding that we didn't ask for this clause to be put in. This is something that was asked for by the county. Supervisor Silva asked that this be put in by county staff right at the end of our discussions, when we were ready to bring it forward. City Attorney, you look like you have a question?
Well, I was just going to add that, as the council might recall, when the trail issue just last came up, the issue was the pre-annexation agreement where the city had agreed not to take any action or make any changes to the specific plan without first getting authority from the county. And all this is, I guess, at the county's action, is the county's manner of giving that authority to the city.
Just for the trail, not for anything else?
Just for the trail.
Okay, thank you. Other council members wish to comment?
And just to confirm, however, it doesn't prevent the city from constructing the trail, if that's what the city chooses to do?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that it's time for public comments. I recognize you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Venetia, and I'm chairman of the Project Advisory Committee for the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency. We have $36 million worth of projects that are currently working in the redevelopment agency, yet, in this very important agreement, the county, and it's really not the county, it's Supervisor Silva, decides to take a half a block of trail and put it in this agreement. This issue has been voted on by the PAC, the Project Advisory Committee, three times in the past 10 years that I've been there. The community supports this trail. This is a multi-use trail that's called out in our specific plan. And in our annexation agreement, we wanted to make very, very clear that we wanted the city council not to have the jurisdiction over changing or altering our specific plan in any way, shape, or form. That's why it took a vote of the Board of Supervisors to change anything in the specific plan. Understand that right now on Mesa Drive, the trail goes halfway up the block. The residents are forced into the street and traffic with their dogs, their bikes, and their horses. This is an important health and safety issue. The land used for the trail completion is public right-of-way. The half a block of land that a few homeowners are objecting to is because they've been encroaching on this public right-of-way for years. Though Supervisor Silva states that this trail is not essential for the county trail system, this statement alone raises eyebrows, depending on who you talk to at Harbors, Beaches, and Parks. It's questionable. What this trail is essential to is to completing the local trail system in the upper back bay in Newport Beach. Our annexation agreement clearly states that any change to our specific plan must be made by a vote of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Silva knows that if he should take this trail issue to the Board and let it stand alone, it would not pass. And that's why he slipped it in this. Our concern in the redevelopment agency, and it's a strong concern, is that this is the first step in many steps that will eventually dismember our trail system and ultimately get rid of the equestrian nature of this community, which is what this minority has alluded to all along. Make no mistake about this, this should be taken out of this very important agreement, and it should be addressed when you decide to take over and negotiate the transfer of the redevelopment agency. This has no place in this document whatsoever, and it stinks of special interest.
Carrie Schultz, I'm a resident of Santa Ana Heights. This is an issue about public property. They... What we need to do is reclaim this public property to give us access to city, county, and state parks. They have also closed down the easements which go through their houses, through the property, just like they do at beachfront property. If you would allow us to re-access those plans, we could wait for you to get the trails back for us. But it is public property, and you do need to reclaim it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Sloka, and I'm here in behalf of Andy Kreen, who could not be here tonight. I'm going to read a statement from him and then an email he sent to Supervisor Silva on August, on October 4th of this year. "I planned to attend the Newport Beach City Council meeting this evening to object to the inclusion of the horse trail issue in the John Wayne Airport Agreement. As you know, my father was taken home yesterday and will be there a few days. I need to spend time with him. Below is a text of an email I sent to Supervisor Silva pertaining to our family position on the trail issue. It is my father's wish that his name not be used either in favor or against this issue. Upon his recovery, I can provide you with a letter from him to that effect." Mr. Silva, this is the email. Apparently Buck Johns is parading around with a letter from my father to Newport Beach City Council members dated May 3, 2006. In this letter, he indicates his opposition to the horse trail along Mesa Drive. In an email I sent May 11th to Newport Council members, my father asked me to tell the council he'd rather not be involved in the horse trail issue from now on. The letter sent to the Newport Council members was signed by my father, but the information presented to him by Buck Johns and Harry Rinker was false. Photos of the Village Kreen entry from Mesa Drive were doctored up by superimposing a chain-link fence and a weed-infested horse trail in front of the Village Kreen. These were presented to him as to what would be installed in front of his property. In a letter dated April 14, 2006, to my father from Harry Rinker, many incorrect facts were presented concerning the Mesa Drive trail in order to obtain the letter from my father. It indicated the horse owners had installed the trail on Cypress and wanted to do the same trail on Mesa Drive. He stated the horse owners had convinced the Santa Ana Heights Homeowners Association, of which there is none, to propose to the city council the construction of a horse trail on Mesa Drive as part of the undergrounding of the utility lines. He implied the trail was to be installed on his and my father's property. As a favor, he requested a letter from my father opposing the proposed trail. Result was the May 3 letter. Following the council meeting, I thought the issue was resolved. I have recently learned Buck is attempting to remove the proposed trail to the Board of Supervisors by introducing an amendment to the Santa Ana Heights specific plan. In doing so, he included a copy of my father's letter of his request to the supervisors. I've spoken to my father, and he wishes me to relay to the supervisors his position on the trail is he has no position. While my father has no position, I do. I live at 2211 Mesa Drive since 1995. I do not have horses, but am in favor of the trail. The part of Mesa I live on currently has no trail or sidewalk on either side of the street. The widening of Mesa Drive and undergrounding of the utilities has been delayed too long. I hope Mr. John's activities do not delay it any further. I understand he is claiming a majority of the local citizens residing in the area are opposed to the trail. I disagree. He presented letters from nine of the 34 properties on Mesa Drive. Of those, four of the 12 located on the affected south side of Mesa were opposed. As hard as he has campaigned, it is assumed the other 25 were contacted and either didn't care or in favor of the trail. The trails are utilized by equestrians, pedestrians, bikers, and dog walkers. One of the objections to the trail is it will reduce curb-size parking. While this may be an issue on Balboa, this area consists of multi-acre lots on one side of the street and one-half to one-half acre lots on the other. Over the length of the proposed trail on any given night, four to eight cars are parked on the one-quarter mile stretch. Another objection is the beautiful landscaping on the south side of Mesa will be destroyed to accommodate the trail. If you drive east on Mesa Drive from Cypress, once you pass the Village Kreen and beginning at the Rinkers, 2342, and ending at the Cox's, 2612, there is no landscaping. There's a chain-link fencing covered with overgrown bushes and ivy that block the pedestrian access. Go look at it. A final point, in the future, if all the horses disappear, the trail can be converted to a bike or sidewalk. Abandon it now, and it is gone forever. Sincerely, Andy Kreen." I'd like to put this in the record, please.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to comment?
And as I pointed out to you before, this is an appointed group, and it's a special interest group. If it was an elected group, I guarantee there would be a different effort with the funds that would go into projects that would benefit all of us.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment?
My name is Brenda Martin. I'm from Newport Beach. I'm going to read a letter from Holly Jarvis of Mesa Drive, who could not be here. "Dear City Council Members, due to the passing of my father, I am out of town and unable to attend the city council meeting on Tuesday evening. This issue is important enough for me to take the time to write you and ask for the removal of Section 11(c) from the Newport and County Cooperative Agreement. The problem with this agreement is the fact that a few politically connected residents that oppose the trail for selfish reasons were unable, were able to influence a county supervisor into adding this to an agreement that has nothing whatsoever to do with the trail issue. Do you find this unacceptable?" Acceptable? I'm sorry. "I object to Section 11(c) being added to this agreement at the last minute with no discussion or vote from the full Board of Supervisors, trail committees, et cetera. Is this the way a government should behave? Am I the only one outraged? I believe that any action by the council that would result in the deletion of the Mesa Drive trail will be doing a disservice to our community and the city of Newport, as well as trail users throughout the county. The trail issue should be dealt with separately from the JWA issues that promised the cooperative agreement. The trail in question does not seek to take land from any homeowner. Those opposed to the trail are attempting to keep their encroachments that exist on the public right-of-way. Additionally, a trail existed along this very street for many years until those residents began constructing their own curbs and landscaping that encroached into the public right-of-way and forced pedestrians and equestrians alike into the street. The proposed trail simply would return the public right-of-way back to the public. Anyone who doesn't understand this issue is missing the point. If funding for an aesthetically pleasing trail were to be eliminated, the encroachments should not be allowed to exist. The safety issue alone should warrant the investigation of this issue. Is this too much to ask? Does a tragic accident have to occur for this to matter? The cooperative agreement should not encourage the elimination of this trail. In order to truly serve the community, the trail should be completed, not deleted, from the specific plan. This trail has been a part of the specific plan of Santa Ana Heights for over almost two decades. Newport adopted that plan and agreed to follow it when they annexed the neighborhood. That was a promise that was made to our residents. Now, as soon as a few residents want to flex their power, suddenly everyone is willing to ignore that promise which was made. Protocol for eliminating the trail has not been followed, and I ask you not to allow this ploy to succeed. The majority of the Santa Ana Heights community approve of the trail, as demonstrated from a recent study on the issue. I am a Mesa Drive resident, and am in favor of the trail. Most of the residents who oppose the trail are those who have illegally encroached on the public right-of-way. You did not allow encroachments to continue on the beach. Why would you let it happen in this instance? Please remember these facts when it comes time to cast your vote. Sincerely, Holly Jarvis. 2141 Mesa Drive, Newport Beach."
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment?
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Tim Stokes. I have a residence at 2181 Mesa Drive, next to Andy. I also have a letter from Emily, addressed to the supervisor. I won't read it, but it also states her position in opposition of putting this statement in the agreement that you have here tonight. I also live on Mesa Drive. We own horses, and my daughter rides on those trails. I ask you folks not to eliminate that trail, simply for her safety. Horses and vehicles do not mix. This trail needs to go through. I'd like to get that through.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You have access out the back way, do you not, to the bay trails out the back of your property?
No, sir, we do not.
You're next to the Kreen's, are you, or in that row?
I'm on the north side of the... I'm on the north side of Mesa Drive.
You're on Cypress, are you?
No, sir. I'm on Mesa Drive, but on the north side. There's two sides to the Mesa Drive.
Okay, I understand. But I didn't see any horses along there. But you're in one of the homes along there.
Right, right.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on this?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I'm kind of perplexed and surprised as to how the horse trail got to be to the same magnitude of an airport issue. I'm sorry. This is politics in Orange County at its finest. You know, I started by going to Orange County Supervisor meetings, and it was Harriet Weider. I used to pull agenda items, and they would vote on them anyway. And so it was because Harriet used to do that that I kept going back and going back. So you can all thank Harriet for me being here tonight.
I hope you spoke with her earlier this evening.
So you didn't know that then. Anyway, so Councilmember Selig, is the horse trail in our general plan? Did you find it in there? Because you need to tell the public. This is what goes on in the city.
It's in the printed document, but apparently it's a misprint, I guess. Is that the way to state it?
Oh, okay. Okay. That sounds really good.
Sharon, can you, you want to explain that?
When the city council was holding hearings on the circulation element, the direction was to eliminate from the general plan the map that shows the equestrian trails, because it's not something that is in the existing general plan and is not required to be in there. I am puzzled as to what happened with the final document, because I recall making the change to the text personally. So I'll need to check and see what happened with the map being included when it should not have been.
So the text was changed, but the map wasn't deleted or modified?
Well, I believe so, but I just took a quick look at Mr. Selig's copy.
Thank you.
Another reason to vote no on V. I wonder how many other changes like that are in the general plan. No, no, this is really important. These things should not happen. We waited years and spent millions of dollars. Okay, Homer, you said that the biggest threat was that you got to okay the fact that now we're going to have some kind of power over an extension or another runway. Believe it or not, that is a threat, but that is not the biggest threat to the people that live in Newport Beach. The biggest threat to the people in Newport Beach is that we're going to lose our 10.8 million passenger cap. Everyone should start to chant the airfare mantra, 10.8, shut the gate, because EIR 573 had alternatives that were not voted on, but okayed 14 to 25 million passengers. So this agreement doesn't do anything for that, and I know that Mr. Burnham is here, and I know that we hired Mr. Cox, Richard Cox. They don't seem to know that, though, Mr. Burnham, and I still don't know how much we pay him. But anyway, also, now, we don't have anything on the redevelopment agency money. This didn't come, this is not part of this deal. This is just the horse trail, because it's the most important thing in the city right now, the horse trail, and the airport runway or extension. So I guess I'm really concerned, because in the beginning, this has been going on for years, closed-door meetings, okay. We paid Gary Hunt and another guy, Lowry, I don't know, $36,000, $40,000 a month for a few years to go to Washington, D.C. to help us with the airport. We never got anything back on that, either. No one ever knew whatever came out of those meetings. The fire station in Santa Ana Heights, is that going to be paid for out of general fund, or are you going to be able to reclaim that money out of the redevelopment agency, and when is that supposed to happen? And the Dunes Tideland, I thought the original reason for the spheres was because the county needed money. And so what was going to happen is that we were going to take over the Tidelands in these areas, and they were going to give us the county Tideland money, and then we were going to give them back other dollars so that they could put it into their general fund, because they needed money. So that was a big part of why you were meeting, was to establish that. I know, poor council member, Ridgeway.
Four years.
I know. Four years, and this is all we got, okay? And how much did this spend? How much did we pay? A million dollars? We can't have sirens in the city, but we can spend four years on this document that concentrates on horses. Horses. This is a sad day in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I say something?
Yes.
If this is a sad day in the city, because this agreement is going to protect us from a second runway, I'll take a sad day every day of the year. This is a tremendous achievement for this city, and it's too bad some people cannot recognize that and admit it, because there is another agenda there.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Gardner. I live in Cronyn, Elmar. There is no silver bullet for the airport. There's no one thing that we can do that will totally protect us. We need a lot of arrows in our quiver, and this is a very good arrow. That doesn't mean we don't continue to pursue the other aspects of this, but I would encourage us to, you to accept this as a first step and a good arrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jane Jones. I live on Cypress Street. I'm the president of the Back Bay Equestrians. I want to tell you that I actually like the cooperative agreement, except for the part that discusses the horse trail. We all know that it was a surprise. We all know that it was a last-minute item to be added, and I would have to say that it is inappropriate to have it in that cooperative agreement. I just want to tell you that in the research that I've done on this subject, I have found that many of the people that were opposed to that trail were given false information. And I really feel that by addressing the true facts in town meeting-type of meetings, that we can get the facts out that are correct, and we can actually work towards building a community that works together on this instead of separating my neighborhood. That's really what my goal is. I'm a member of PAC, and I'm part of the Trail Subcommittee, and my goal is to really work with you to make sure that everybody's happy with this trail. I'm not happy with how this came about, but I want to do whatever I can to help you to make sure that this does go through, because it is for the benefit of the community and even countywide. I really want to ask you to step up to the plate for us. We're all counting on you to do the right thing with this, and I'm at your service. I'll do whatever I can to help you, okay? Do you have any questions for me?
Any councilors? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Stan Kasek. I live on Cypress Street in Newport Beach. This evening, you've heard testimony unanimously from everyone that supports this agreement. You've also heard testimony unanimously that supports taking the horse trail out of this agreement. I hope you listened to the community and their testimony. You have an opportunity to show that you care and that you listened tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Mr. Mayor and councilmen, back again. Dennis Baker, I live in Cronyn, Elmar, and I am here on behalf of the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends. There's two things I want to point out. First thing, I want to make a public, very specific public statement. The Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends has no position on the horse trail. And the reason I'm so emphatic about that is I literally have people come up to me and say, "Oh, I understand you guys are against the horse trail." The board has no position on the horse trail. We have members who have stated concerns both ways on this, but they have been speaking on their own and have said so. So that's a very specific thing I want to make clear. The other thing is, is that the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends does support the Comprehensive Resource Management Plan, which is part of this, and so by extension, we would support this agreement. And my own personal things, I'm going to switch hats now, is it does appear to me that that little section about the horse trail is kind of stuck on there at the last minute. The Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends have been working with Mrs. Jones. I've been doing that, and we are working on equitable solutions so that the naturalists and the people that are the equestrians in that area, we can come out with plans for various things, and the horse trail might be part of that, that we can work together, and we're all in agreement on. And the Comprehensive Resource Management Plan section that I made reference to, actually, I think, came about partly because of concerns about the naturalists, about the direction the management of the Upper Bay was going, and this was one of the things that the membership felt pretty strongly about, that we needed a plan and have a very well-organized approach to this instead of a shotgun or a random type of effect, or reactionary effect, to the management of the Upper Bay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Any discussion from the city council?
I would like to discuss it quickly. Councilmember Rozansky. And as stated, I think, quite well by the city manager, I think this is a red-letter day for the city. I know I've worked hard on this agreement for two, two and a half years now, and we need all the protection that we can get against the airport. And for people to come up here and say that this is a horse trail agreement, you know, you need to go back and read this agreement. It's true that the county has kicked this back to us, but personally, you know, when we voted on this, it was a six-to-one vote. I was against sending it to the county to begin with, as far as the horse trails were concerned, because this trail, if there is going to be a trail, is in our city, and we should determine whether there'll be a trail or not, not the county Board of Supervisors. If you read the agreement, it says nothing about whether the trail will be built or not built. It just says that the county has no interest in whether it'll be built or not built. And this will be decided another day, and I'm sure you'll all be back on that day. But I hope that when this agreement does go to the county, that you, instead of going there to object to it, will go there and support it for the benefit of all of our residents, and not just a few who have a self-interest in whether there's one paragraph, more or less, which is meaningless in the context of this agreement. So with that being said, I will make a motion to approve this, if the motion hasn't already been made.
I'll second. Mr. Mayor?
Who was that you?
I second.
Excuse me. Was there somebody else wanting to make a comment? Okay, Mr. Curry.
Well, first of all, let me just echo Mr. Rozansky. I was stunned to hear this agreement characterized as sad. The fact that the first time ever that the city of Newport Beach has a veto over runway expansion at John Wayne Airport is a huge victory for our residents. It's a huge victory for our quality of life. It's not the last battle, but it is a major battle, and it is a major accomplishment. I can't, I am flabbergasted that that would be described and that would be minimized as somehow sad. Some people simply just don't understand the impact of this airport on our community and the importance of this agreement in managing the airport. Now, let me say this. I've received many comments from people pro and con on the horse trail, and I believe that the people who are on either side of the horse trail deserve their day in front of this city council to make their case, and that this city council owes residents on both sides of this issue. And I've received, frankly, quite a bit of correspondence from people outside the community, up or down in terms of where we go with this. The horse trail provision here does not bind this city council. It's an expression of the county's authorization for us to consider the issue and make a decision at some point in time in the future. And I'm committed that we're going to put this item on the agenda and have a vote on it, where everybody in the community can come and express their views and get a fair vote. But to hold up this agreement that gives us a veto over airport runway expansion at John Wayne is absolutely wrong and absolutely ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Selig was next.
Well, I agree with both the comments of Councilman Rozansky and Curry on this. There's really a balancing of interests that we have to take place here, and overwhelmingly, it's in favor of being able to control the expansion of the airport. In this, I was disappointed to see the addition of this clause in here regarding the trail, but as a matter of fact, it has no real effect on anything, because in the end, the decision to have or not have a trail up here is going to rest on the city council, not on the Board of Supervisors. So whether that clause is in this agreement or not is really immaterial, and I think a lot is being made about nothing here. And the fact is, is that getting control over the physical expansion of that airport is so important to the city that to make a big issue over something that really has no practical effect just doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm somewhat perplexed by all of the hoopla over this whole thing, and to me, this is an important red-letter day for the city, that we are going to have some say over the physical expansion of that airport. That is a big, big deal, and so I'm strongly in favor of the agreement.
Mr. Ridgway, you were next.
Thank you. Having worked on this, and actually, there was a pre, there was an ad hoc committee prior to this Fears Committee, which I was a member of. It actually has been almost four years. And first of all, on the horse trail paragraph, I do think it's fine. The policy decision will be made right here with everybody in this room. And if Mr. Rinker and Mr. Johns did not say the truth, then that will come out during those hearings. But I have been in hundreds of hours of meetings over these multiple issues, and I don't think anybody can appreciate the magnitude of the work that has gone into this by numerous people. Going back to Homer and Fludow, Dave Kiff, Bob Burnham, myself, have met with the supervisors one-on-one. There were weeks where I met with supervisors, the same supervisor, three, four days in a row. And this has not been an easy negotiation, and this is a banner day for the city of Newport Beach. This is a, this is an excellent agreement, I think. And there are many more components that we're not even talking about. The Comprehensive Resource Management Plan, critical, both upper and lower Newport Bay. When you look at the word comprehensive, they're talking about everything in the lower bay. They're talking about everything in the upper bay. Also included in there is the future of the redevelopment agency. I'm not happy where the redevelopment agency negotiations went, but I am also satisfied that they will head in the right direction here in the near future. And it will be to the new council to negotiate that. But this is an excellent agreement for the city, and quite candidly, it's an excellent agreement for you, because the buck stops here on the horse trail. And quite candidly, you should be, you should be supporting it. I know you're not happy, but at the end of the day, this is an excellent agreement, and it's for the entire city. So to that end, I want to say, obviously, I support this. I cannot say otherwise. The number of documents I've read, the number of meetings I've had, I don't think you people appreciate what amount of time and effort has gone into this document. Anybody else wish to comment? To Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, it is another layer of protection for our community on John Wayne Airport. It also allows the city to have a more active role on the upper Newport Back Bay. I appreciate that the environmentalists and the naturalists support this agreement. It's true regarding the horse trail, that the buck does stop here, and it will be the Newport Beach City Council, and that's what this agreement says, that it determines whether the trail will be built or not. And I just wanted to thank staff for the many hours of negotiations. It was a grueling process, and it really was, and I thank you for your dedication to our community and to add another layer of control as far as John Wayne Airport. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm going to say the same thing, Don. I'll say.
Good.
I believe this is a good agreement, and I'm happy with it. I hope we've got it drafted in a way that it's a declarative statement rather than a literative statement. But I believe it's good for our community, and I am for it. Thank you.
I'm the only one. I think that those that are objecting to this clause need to go back and think really hard about it, because I feel that you have a lot better access to the seven of us than you have to three Board of Supervisors individuals. I think that you will perhaps have access to one, the district supervisor that's representing you for this district, but it's very difficult based, and we have tried in selling the Fears Issues Agreement to talk to the entire Board of Supervisors, and it's almost impossible to get to them on a regular basis and tell your story. So I think that if you look at it, I think you're a whole lot better off trying to get that trail built by this city council than you are through the Board of Supervisors. I think that if you look back at a number of the other things that you've tried to get done in get done in Santa Ana Heights with your money and see how easy it has been, like, for instance, the park. We bid the project. We went out there. We had the money, I mean, we had the project ready to go for bid, and what happened to it? The Board of Supervisors said, "Well, we think we want to reconsider." I think that if you look at those types of projects, I think that the, the horse arena, we, we're taking, we're stepping up there. We're saying, "This is a project that we want to help you out with. We want to get going on it. We'll bid it. We'll administer it." The undergrounding district, "We're working on that with you." I think that you have a lot better access through this City Council than you do through the Board of Supervisors, and I think that perhaps, I mean, we could go out with a project tomorrow without this agreement, and we could want to build that contract, build that horse trail, and the Board of Supervisors could move, could turn it down. But if this agreement goes through and that clause is in there, it's us, not them, that are going to be able to either, to help you build that or at least allow for the discussion to occur throughout the entire community on that item. So that, with that said, I'd like to call for the vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have item, an added item, number 19 on the agenda. The, this has to do with the results of the final traffic analysis on the general plan. Assistant City Manager Wood, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, I would. As we were going through a rather grueling process of public hearings on the land use element of the new general plan, and the City Council was...
Excuse me. Gentlemen and ladies, can we listen to our vote, please?
We're just so happy. The, the City Council was reducing some of the development potential in, in the new general plan, and we were keeping track of what would happen to our count of average daily trips with that effort. And at the time of adoption of the general plan, our estimate was that the, the new general plan, which you approved in July, would at full build-out result in 28,920 fewer trips than the existing general plan. We have now gotten the results of the final run of the traffic model on the adopted plan, and that estimate was pretty darn good, but the actual news is even better. The reduction from the existing general plan is 30,467 trips, and those are average daily trips. And I wasn't terribly surprised by that because there were a couple of changes at the last minute that the council made that we hadn't included in the earlier estimate. But another piece of news that comes from the, the final run of the traffic model is the number of intersections that would be operating below level of Service D, which has traditionally been Newport Beach's acceptable standard. And, and what we had thought from the environmental impact report was that the new general plan would result in eight intersections, three within the city limits, and then five that are shared with Irvine in the airport area, would not be able to achieve level of Service D. And what we found as a result of all of the reductions the City Council did is that number is now down to two. So, the only intersections that, at which we could not meet level of Service D are two on Coast Highway in Corona Del Mar, at Goldenrod and at Marguerite, and the policy in the circulation element is to accept level of Service E at those intersections because the improvements that would be required to improve them would do such harm to the pedestrian character of Corona Del Mar. And, and that is a, a really significant reduction from what would be the result of the existing general plan, which would be 18 intersections that would be operating at level of Service E. So, the final study has given us, I think, even better results than we had anticipated.
Anybody on the council have any comments on this? Mr. Nichols?
Is this recorded? I mean, do we have the figures that the actual runs?
Yes, we do.
And that will be in? What will that be in, Sharon? I'm not trying to goad you. I'm trying to find out.
No, it's, it's a public document, but it's, it doesn't become part of the general plan. The EIR is certified, and it doesn't become part of the EIR, but it...
Where can you get a copy of it to look at?
From me or the planning department.
I would like to get a copy.
Would you see to it that a copy is available, but then why?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item?
Hi. Could I? I just want to give you... Um, Tim wanted me to ask, and you can talk about, I guess, talk about that later, but this is the Santa Ana Heights, and it's all one...
And who are you?
Hi, my name's Dolores Otting, and it's a sad day because campaign contributions and politics put that horse trail in. That's why it's a sad day, okay? Anyway, this is the Santa Ana Heights plan, and it's all one color, and they're concerned because maybe this is another era, but they have multifamily there, and so what, they don't know what RSD means, but if it's all one color, does it mean that it's all single family? But could you talk about that later because, but that's for you later. This is, a neighbor of mine emailed me this today, and so they've been trying to get information on the general plan. And it says, "Hi, Dolores, if you have the opportunity, here are some questions you might raise about the general plan update. This supersedes the previous email. Regarding the general plan update, the numbers are confusing. Where do we go to get a concise summary on one, on one sheet of the square foot, the units proposed for the general plan update, including residential, commercial, hotel rooms, et cetera? I could not find numbers in the big general plan book, but I did find table 3.3 in the EIR, which I've attached, that we say we're not supposed to use because that wasn't what was adopted, which is great, understandable table comparing existing square footage of the 88 general plan and proposed square footage of the general plan. The table seems essentially correct except for citywide residential Newport Center Fashion Island and the airport area. If it's feasible to update this table, it could provide the voters a current, understandable explanation of what is in the general plan." Sharon, here, I have another one for you. If you were to go to the city website and click on general plan update and then click on land use, you will find that the airport area is proposed to have 2,200 units, not the 4,300 listed in table 3. We know you're down zone. And if you scroll down to Newport Center Fashion Island, you find the current proposal is for 65 hotel rooms, not 250 as in table 3.3. This is all good news for the public. And 405 new housing units, not the 660. Also, I'm aware that Greg Ramirez has modified the number of proposed hotel motor rooms to 5,642 from 6,549. Friends of mine have gone to the library and reviewed the general plan, but they aren't aware it isn't final. So, if table 3.3 were updated or a new summary provided, the voters would have a much better idea of what they are voting for in November. Can you give us some help? Another perplexing number thing is that the ballot language for Measure V references that non-residential development square footage is being reduced by 449, 449, 499,000 square feet. Yet, the preamble to the general plan states that new commercial office and industrial play, space is reduced by 1.45 million square feet, along with some others. Are having a problem reconciling, I along with others are having a problem reconciling these numbers. Hopefully, we can get some help in understanding what we are voting for. And then, on the general plan, it does say that you've decreased it by approximately 450,000 square feet, and it's non-residential development. What is non-residential, non-residential development if it's not commercial and industrial? And so, this is very confusing to people, that coupled with the fact now the horse plan isn't in there. So, you need to do something to help the public because they don't know why they're supposed to vote on this if it's changed. And, and so, I know you have an answer to that, Robin, and I appreciate that, and you please need to, if you want to borrow this to look at it, but this is all one color now. So, it's supposed to be different colors for different types of housing. Thank you for your time and for all your hard work. I know that you spend hours and hours and give up your families to do this, and I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Sharon, as far as the green color, isn't that, doesn't that include multifamily in that type of use?
I, I would need to look at the map and the table to, the, the map alone doesn't tell the whole story.
Well, let me say...
I think multifamily is one of the approved uses in that location, but go ahead. Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, part of the area is shown as RM, multifamily.
Well, let's not try to answer it tonight. This is a receive and file. Everything Dolores just reported was to the citizens of this community's benefit. It actually mitigated everything that we presented in the past. So, if you could clarify that and maybe get out a, a mailer to that effect so the citizens know there's good reason to vote for Measure V. But anyhow, it's a receive and file, and I...
Can you also clarify the policies that relate to the revised findings that you've had through the, the traffic study as far as the reduction of, of impacted intersections? How would that work?
We would need to amend the new circulation element if you wanted to. I, I assume that what you're suggesting, Mr. Mayor, is that the policy in the circulation element where the City Council agreed to set level of Service E for the intersections in the airport area and Coast Highway in Dover, where they now can meet level of Service D, that you're interested in changing the policy so that level of Service D is the standard, and that would take its own amendment to the new general plan.
Well, I, I would suggest an education program and not get bogged down in technicalities because we only have about four weeks here. So, I think if we could educate the general public as to what we're saying tonight, that would be the most important thing we could do.
Well, we, we have sent a 10-page summary of the general plan to every resident in the city.
I, I understand, but what was said tonight is actually even better than what was sent.
Well, I would disagree because I, I understand that the public is confused by some of these things because there are so many documents and so many numbers associated with the general plan. Table 3-3 is not in the general plan. It's in the draft EIR, and it is showing the numbers for the project that was analyzed in the EIR, which the council reduced substantially before it was adopted. The difference between the, the reductions in commercial office and industrial space that's in the preamble to the general plan is different from the number in the ballot language because the ballot language is all non-residential development, which is what Charter Section 423 requires us to examine. So, that includes not only commercial office and industrial, it includes institutional, it includes clubhouses for golf courses, it includes every single use other than residential. So, it needs to be a different number. Okay.
And the other, the other thing is that commercial reduction was closer to 2 million square feet? Commercial and industrial?
Non-residential. I... 1.45, non-residential. No, that's not non-residential. That's commercial, industrial, and office.
Okay, but, but didn't the, the revisions that we put together total up instead of being the 1.45 closer to 2 million?
They might, but I don't know off the top of my head, and it's too confusing to do that.
Thank you. This is a receive and file item. The next item, let's see, city clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. I motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Anybody have any reconsiderations? Seeing none, I'd like to close the meeting tonight in memory of the wife of one of our longtime employees in the General Services Department. Last Tuesday, Imelda Acuna passed away. She was the wife of Perry Acuna, Sr., a maintenance worker in General Services, and the mother of Perry, Jr., who is our street maintenance crew chief. She was raised in Texas where she met her husband. She was a wonderful wife, mother, grandmother, and the glue to the very close family that the Acunas are. She will be sorely missed, and we offer our condolences to the Acuna family. This meeting is being adjourned in her honor. Thank you.